Public hearings I closed before the break. Before we get to resolutions, I'm actually going to create the subcommittees so we have somewhere to send this resolution if the law and body is to send somewhere. So I'm going to create a subcommittee handed by Council Vice President Ponce Fedeo as he's also the Finance Chair. I'm going to include one member of the majority party, Trent Colfer. One member of the minority party has spoken with Paul Arquette. He has volunteered to be on that committee. I will ask the school committee to align someone. I'm sure she will email me in the morning with a name. The school administration. Again, I've asked the Chairman of the School Committee to solicit a name from the administration. And I had asked the Director, Director Muskin, to give me a name from the mayor's administration. Additionally, I'll be reaching out to Colonel Winkler in the morning, asking him to appoint a subject matter expert from the police force. Deputy Chief McKenna, asking him to, well, Chief McKenna, asking him to appoint a subject matter expert from the fire department. This will be the core of the committee. I'm sure the Chairman may want to add other subject matter experts, whether it be a student, members of the faculty at both schools. We do have a retired teacher in our midst as a councilman who will probably come in as a subject matter expert to go with this again is to create a collaborative committee to really meet and discuss the issues. With that, I will move on to entertain a motion to send to that new committee a resolution for the amendment to the general laws and insurance management schools sponsored by. It should not just say Council President Frina, it should say Council President Farina, Council Vice President Fedeo, Councilman Hopkins, Councilman Colfer, and Councilman Pavloskus. Councilman Pavloskus.
I'll make a motion to send this resolution to the new committee that was just formed.
I have a motion, second. I have a second. Under discussion, Councilman Fedeo.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a few comments about this committee as we've spoken about this a few times. Since, I believe last year, actually sometime last year, started looking at all the incidents that occurred going back to New Mexico High School where a 21-year-old student, or a former student, posed as a current student, was able to sneak into a high school and shoot two other students. The issue with the, when he was on that school with brothers, pointed to a female student letting someone into the door, two boys with a gun and pistol looking at someone. I can believe there was one in Arizona. We had the New York Light Path Incident. And we also obviously had this last terror incident in Florida. But as I looked at these things and looked at, and I will be Councilman Lanning credit for keeping my interest in research. I've researched quite extensively, probably much, but I started looking at the Sandy Booker Report. The General Assembly did a study in 2014 on the illegal caliph and guns, which was very, very frightening. It also contains many statistics with regard to concealed carry permits. And one of the reasons I wasn't, really was unsure about what Councilman Lanning was trying to propose was that there are only four tenths of 1% of the population of Rhode Island has a concealed permit. That translates into about 3,600 permits of that. 25 to 50% are probably retired policemen. And in Cranston, the only 346 permits were issued. And of that, probably 20, 30% could be retired policemen. So we're talking about a small number. I'm also aware that there are no employees from the school department that have a concealed permit that needs approval from our police chief. So probably, we're talking about a very, very my youth amount of people that could possibly have one. No teachers do, to our knowledge. There's a state law, 114760, which says that guns in schools, there's no such guns, they're not allowed in schools. There are only two exceptions, five retired policemen, or policewomen, and concealed carry permit holders. And there are a couple of minor exceptions when you have an event, and you require a Muskin or something crazy, but. So 99.6% of Rhode Island residents are now prohibited right now from bringing their guns onto school grounds. We don't have any teachers that have guns. So the narrow focus of that resolution just seems to touch nothing. It would, really would do nothing, as far as I can see. It would not prevent any of the incidents that I've looked at with regard to these shootings. They're usually homicide external forces. And that's one of the reasons why we looked at possibly the metal detectors. I don't think that every kid is afraid of a metal detector. You go to a ballgame, a hockey game, a basketball game, you go to a dingaling stadium, a football game, you're going to go to a metal detector, whether you have two or 52. So I think that that's one of the reasons why I think that Councilman Lanning's resolution really didn't address the safety issue. It addressed, it targeted possibly a couple of thousand people in Rhode Island that may have a concealed permit. And there's no, there's no basis to assume that they're a threat to our schools. We've not seen anyone. We haven't seen teachers shooting their students. We haven't seen someone with a concealed permit going into a school for that express purpose. The issues that I saw were access to the schools was more of a big issue. You can see it right outside this building. You can drive right up to any of these buildings. You can drive a car way through a crowd of people. Any person of that mentality could do that. So I don't think that Councilman Lanning's resolution addressed any of the real major issues. I looked at, Ms. Kelliver's public service analysis was very helpful in detail in some of the issues that we faced. The issues are extensive, they're complex, and we need a comprehensive analysis. And we're looking at this for two or three months, and I wish I had done it sooner. But the focus, I think, of this committee should be to look at current laws and resources that we currently have control of to solve this issue. We can't look into wishing, wishful thinking with regard to future laws that might be passed. That concealed law has been proposed many times. It may be back to the legislature and the sheer need to take it. So we have to look at what happens if it doesn't pass? What happens if there are no other government laws passed? We can, I think that our first line of defense, figure out what we can do with our current resources. And I know that the school committee has done a lot of work in this area. And it would be nice for us to have some participation from them because then we will be briefed a little bit better. But I envision it to be a fact finding mission of experts. We want to have as many experts come forward so that we can get a consensus or at least get some, formulate some ideas for the full council. We also look at the use of financial support that we can get from the government, state and federal. We also need to look at what we can do in our new budget. And we can also look at the long-term solutions with regard to this issue. Many of the speakers were correct. There's a culture, we've had a cultural shift. We have become a violent society. And we can't just ignore that fact. We can't say, well, we don't want our kids to see metal detectors to our guns. Well, there's no reason that we can't have plainclothes policemen instead of uniformed officers. But I recall when my own kids were at Bryanston Public School, there were dare officers, and there was always a policeman around. And they became very good friends with the police officers, and they really helped all the kids, and they were there to assist them. I think kids can become comfortable around police officers. And I think we need to promote that because we've got such a disconnect and hatred for law enforcement, and that's good, we need them. We need them every day. So I think that the idea of this committee is to address these issues on a really nonsensical basis. We want some real solutions to real problems, not field the legislation, but do good legislation and do good proposals that we can implement, that we have control of. And, you know, I thought, just one hard, Mr. Councilman, I mean, I have no problem with looking at your concealed carry issue as part of this. I think it's a small part. I don't think it's as big an issue, and I don't think it does much to eliminate the threats. I think we need to assess the threats that currently exist and that may exist rather than saying, well, we're going to ban this weapon, we're going to do this, and we're going to take our guns out of schools. Well, we have no enforcement procedure at this point. So if you don't have a metal detector or a law enforcement person to really watch who's coming in, you're not going to know whether someone has it or not. So I think we need to look at this from a common sense perspective. And I think that we can do that, but we have to take, we just have to look at it in those terms. So with that, I mean, I certainly welcome Councilman Lanning, if you want to have that part of this, or if you want, try to run one caveat with regards to your proposal, is that if a retired police officer were to be hired to work in plainclothes at a school, he would need a concealed carry permit, and you would be prohibiting him or her from working in that capacity.
That's not true.
So that may, that may be a problem. But anyway, that's the reason of the committee, and I think we can, we're going to keep it compact and concise, and then we will put forth something for the entire council to really address.
Councilman Lanning, the Councilman Stargos.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing the same amount of time as you did as Council Vice President. Now I know why lawyers get $300 an hour.
Yes.
First of all, what you're insinuating is the school committee didn't know what they were talking about when they introduced this resolution and sent to the General Assembly. So the school committee, which directly handles the kids of the city, not the city council, they don't know what they're talking about, what Councilman Fedeo was saying. And this should be incorporated with a few amendments. Well, the city council, everybody knows, is controlled by one party. You can amend this any way you want, and there's nothing I or anybody else can do about it, just like you buried the committee for 10 months. Now, when it comes to concealed weapons in schools, during the budget hearings last time around, Colonel Winkler was sitting here, and at that time, Councilman Farina asked him directly, if you've got a concealed weapon, what do you do with it if you're going to pick up your kid in school? Colonel Winkler said to him, you put the gun in the glove box, locked, and you put the ammunition in the trunk, locked. That way you don't carry concealed weapons to a school. All this resolution is doing is confirming what Colonel Winkler, the head of our police department, thinks is the right thing to do. And told the council president, this is how it should be done. A second question, I don't know if anybody in this council has a concealed weapon permit. I know I don't. Maybe somebody who does will admit it if they don't find it. Third, I'd like to thank school committee Chairman Ruggieri and school committee person Culhane for their kind comments this evening. They were right on mark when they spoke. I look at this resolution as not as a cure at all. It's not a cure altogether, but it's a step in the right direction, a direction that this council did not even want to go in. That is what surprised me, because we have a former member of the school committee on this council and a former school teacher on this council, two schoolteachers. And nobody wanted to go along with this resolution, even though the NEA supports it, the city and town chair supported it, the police departments statewide supported it. Everybody supports it except five members of this council.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes, I'm going to cut you off.
No, no, we're actually on the first resolution about safety in schools.
Well, he went on a tirade about my resolution, so I answered him back. Now, I'll cut it, I'll stop it, and I will continue.
I'd like to go over that and answer him, and then I'd like to talk about safety, then when your resolution's up, you can speak as long as you like.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I will continue. This is the first step. I don't believe in guns in schools, and I don't believe people should have assault weapons. It's my view, as to review, as to view of many, many people in this city. And I'm representing their wishes, not my party's wishes, not the NRA's wishes, or not any other lobbying group's wishes. Their wishes. And that's exactly what you people should be doing. And I want to say I totally agree. In a bipartisan manner with all of us. And if we work together as a group, we can accomplish an awful lot in this city. But if we get polarized like we currently are, we're going to accomplish nothing. And a good example of that is this committee. Notice one Democrat on the committee, three Republicans, and then we go on and on and on. Who controls the committee? I end my statement, or one last statement. Mr. Kirshenbaum, before I forget. You said earlier, you wrote the original resolution, am I correct?
I was the drafter. I incorporated comments from different council people, and I put it together in the resolution.
Did you ask any Democrats if they reported this?
No. But I will say this, I draft resolutions for Democrats. I probably drafted more resolutions for Democrats in ordinances during this session, probably three to one for Republicans. And I don't ask the Republicans what they think of your ordinance or resolution I draft for you guys.
All right.
So that's just the procedure I had.
So you would consider this a violation of any open meetings law?
I have considered, I had no meetings. My conversations were one-on-one with some of the members, and they were over the phone.
Oh, you talked to them individually, they were over the phone? Wouldn't that be a violation of sound, do you mean, yourself?
No, I'm the drafter, I'm seeking input from people. And I'm not having a meeting. I'm drafting something for them because I'm their attorney.
All right.
In your attorney. When you call me, I don't go to the meeting, I say I'm talking to my friend John.
That's true.
Yeah.
But I didn't call you the letter people, am I correct?
They didn't either.
Okay, I'll let you go. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Councilman Lanning. Councilman Stargos.
Well, just to stay on this topic, I think if you do legal research, you'll find this is a violation of the open meetings law. You cannot have a rolling meeting where the majority of a legislative body agrees on a proposal without a public meeting. And that's, that's what's happening.
You're making assumptions that are just absolutely factually and unbelievably wrong. There was no rolling meeting in this case, none whatsoever. You don't know how many people I talked to, you don't know when I talked to them, you don't know anything to make that statement. And that's, accusing someone of violating open meeting requires more diligence, and I'm quite surprised they used an open forum.
I'll say that in open forum because I had a copy of a press release that quoted five members of the council, and had, and I got a resolution that was sponsored by five members of the council. That's a majority of the council. And the method at which that was devised, you're right, I have no idea how that happened. But the end result is the result is a, is a rolling meeting. You can't have a situation where I talk to Ken, and we agree, and then Ken talks to Paul, and they agree, and then Paul talks to Chris. That's a rolling meeting.
That's how it happened.
Well, how could you come up with a?
That's how it happened.
How, how, so you polled people and said, hey, what do you think about these? How did you get everybody to agree to five different items?
You won.
You polled them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, no, I talked, I talked to two, I talked to two council members, two. It's not a rolling meeting.
It is, you need to look at that because I can tell you, we went over it.
You're saying that if I talked to more than a quart, and I didn't?
You've got five people on the, on the resolution.
I didn't write the press release, Steve.
I, that, I didn't say you wrote the press release, I'm not saying you are at fault. I'm going to, all I'm saying is the end result, because I don't know the process, you're absolutely right, the end result was a violation of open meetings.
That's how it worked.
Okay. By the way, you have a court of information on the floor, Councilman Stargos.
Councilman Stargos, I never spoke to Mr. Kirshenbaum, I had no input in the drafting of his resolution. When the resolution?
How did your name get on there?
When it was sent to me, I was asked if I wanted to be co-sponsored by an email method.
There you go. You were chosen.
Stop. I was the original sponsor of this ordinance on Wednesday. When it reached the docket, I received phone calls from other members of this body, i.e. Republicans.
What's the use of phones for?
I would like to co-sponsor this with you. I was the single sponsor on the docket on Thursday. They saw the line on Thursday and said, wow, safety in schools, I'd like to sponsor that. It's pretty simple.
Well, we won't settle this here. Onto the issue of how to deal with the, with the council in our schools. I think we have really two things, two different areas that we're talking about. One is, really, I think the speakers emphasized, is what can we do by ourselves as a city to make our schools safer? And I think that subject, while the city council can be supportive, that subject is really a school committee subject, and they know, they know this stuff. I mean, I was on the school committee for 10 years, and I don't know, I couldn't have said a tenth of what Ms. Culhane and Mr. Jerris said. So I think the best people to deal with those issues are the school committee with the police department. And that they should, that either we should have a joint meeting, probably should have a joint meeting, and the school committee should say, here's what we got, here's what we're doing now, and here's what we suggest for approvals. So that's, I think that's one path we should take. And then the other path is to do with resolutions that, of things that we don't control, that are really state issues, like John's resolution, like banning assault weapons, like banning high magazine, high capacity magazines, hetero background checks, more money for mental health services in and out of the schools, those kinds of things. But I really, I think we, I want to, I will offer an amendment at some point. I don't want to do that until people have a chance to, to talk. Call for a joint meeting of the, the council and the school committee with the, with the police department about how to make our schools safer. And that really is a, is a better route to go than this committee that's being proposed, which frankly, I think is just going to be a quiet wire. And it's going to take four or five meetings just to find out what the school departments are, what they do, and understand. And we can get, go a lot faster if we just have them come and tell us that.
Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President Farina. I'd just like to thank my members of the public coming out, a lot of good testimony, and I learned a lot about your comments and how I feel about things. I'd also like to say I want to thank President Frina for sending this to a commission because I think we need to bring other parties, and I think the school committee has the expertise on school safety. I'd also like to hear from the parents, I'd like to hear from the teachers. I think we need the police to buy all the fire. So it's going to be a collaborative effort, and I think that's the direction we should take. However, and the ultimate goal, my colleague, Mrs. Stargos, is correct, is the school committee under this office business. However, whatever the school committee needs, Steve, we're going to have to be involved because we're the funding mechanism, and we're going to have to know step by step what needs to be implemented. So I think we, as you said, we need a couple of joint meetings with the school committee and the council, and we need to move forward with this. And I'm glad everybody came up. Thank you.
Councilman McCollum?
Thank you, Council President, I'll agree. I have a lot of respect for all of you fellow council people, but I'm really disappointed that, Council President, you say it was Wednesday, and you're probably right, but I didn't realize this, I didn't see this on my, on my text till Friday, the press release and the resolution. And I think I've shown in the past that I'm willing to work with, with both parties. I've actually been criticized by no party for getting along with some of you too well, but I will change. That being said, I will support this going to committee. It needs to be discussed with all, all different parties, and I think you selected a good variety to sit down and discuss this and get some solutions to it. But I'm also going to vote for Councilman Lanning's resolution. I just feel in the future, if we're all truly working for the amendment of the citizens' agreement, that we work jointly, and I think we can get a lot of good things done.
Thank you. Councilman McCollum? One of the big reasons I didn't call you back to be a sponsor is I didn't want to get accused of having a rolling meeting, but I do appreciate your first support. Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, President. I'd like to thank some of the speakers that spoke tonight, very articulate. And one of the things that I learned in education is that you learn more when you listen, not when you're speaking. If you think that just guns in schools is the issue, then you don't know what you're talking about. We have more problems in our schools. And I've lived 37 years in education, with a master's degree in education. I've spent my whole life there. My son's the principal at Smithfield High School. My wife teaches at Bain. My daughter teaches at Bryanston East. Thankfully, I just retired from teaching. This is an issue that is more than guns. And I'm going to point out a few that I've seen in my youth. Gangs, major, major problem. I had a student walk out of my classroom and get in a car because he was forced to by a gang. Fights in schools. You know how many fights got broken up in the hallways? We're very lucky in Cranston that we have the teachers that we have. Very, very lucky, just like we had our first responders get recognized tonight. The teachers that we have will do exactly what that coach, Donovan Poplin, did. Our teachers will jump in front of a bullet to save their kids.
But they shouldn't have to.
I went after a student one day, right here at Bryanston East, at the auto shop, with the vice principal that was here tonight. We tackled him because he had a gun in his waistband. How did it get there? Well, we don't know. But the reason why it was there, and this is the biggest problem in schools, bullying, which leads to most of the problems. On an average, 600,000 kids stay home on a daily basis in the United States because they're being bullied in the school. This is bigger than just guns, people. And what we need to do is look at, as a group, all of us, I don't care what party we're with, I don't care where we live in Cranston. This needs to be addressed as one. We need to protect our kids and our teachers. Now, I don't know how we're going to do it, and I don't know what. Now, I don't know how we're going to do it, and I don't know what the answer is. I hope a lot of it comes out of this committee. But we've got soft targets all over the place. Most of you go to Thanksgiving Day football game, four or 5,000 people. There's no security at the front gates. Talk about a soft target. Kids going on buses. Kids walking from east to brigs. Cranston West, five buildings. These are soft targets. Our sporting events, I was at the Cranston East LaSalle basketball game the other night, 1,200 people. Talk about a soft target. I've done the Alice training. I stood there when a policeman came in with the guns. And you know what I had to defend myself? A wastebasket. I threw the wastebasket at them and ran out the door. Guys, this is a bigger issue than just guns in schools. Suzanne Arena made a great point of the, of the resolution. We have to be leaders on this. So I respect that comment. We all have to, not just the people sitting here. All of you have to help us figure this out. This isn't just a subcommittee. This is Cranston, one city trying to figure out what every city in the country is doing right now. We're not the only ones studying this problem tonight, I can assure you that. Across the country, every city council is working on this problem. Teachers are trained, they're trained to work with your kids. But the one thing that I took out of 36 years of education is a quote, and I learned it early. "Kids want to know how much you care more than they care about how much you know." Think of that for a minute. Kids want to know how much we care. And if we really and truly and honestly care about our kids and the future of this city, we need to build bridges and come together and everybody collaborate as one unit to save our future and this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Hoppins. Councilor McCollum.
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate it. And I would like to thank all the audience and their participation. It's a lot of information that helps understand where we are in this. And I think all of us really, truly care about the safety of our children. My kids, I had good fortune going through graduating through Cranston schools. I have nieces and nephews in the schools, and I have lots of nieces and nephews that went through the Cranston system. As a former member of the school committee, I certainly understand the importance of that, the education of them is more important than our children. And so I know ultimately, we all want to get to the solution. And I don't, I don't know that there is necessarily the best solution or a solution. But certainly, I want to thank the president, the council president, for allowing me to be part of this subcommittee. And I look forward to the work collectively to come to a viable resolution that we can present to the state legislature, take common sense action. Ultimately, we really need to get to the root cause of this in order to solve the problem. I deal with business, and for me, it's always about how do I get to the root cause of the problem? Because if I don't, if I try to go after the problem, just on the surface, just at the top, and I really don't get to the bottom of it, I'm never going to solve that problem. It's going to come back, it's going to come back again and again and again. And so I look forward to this. I would say to, I do want to say to one of my fellow councilmen that you do not know how I was asked the council's bill. And I take offense to the fact that you assume how it was done. I would ask you also, how you have individuals join your resolutions, of which there are many. And is that a rolling meeting when you do that? I don't know. I'm not there, Council President. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Council. Councilor McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I think the time to act in school safety was 20 years ago, 30 years ago. I remember being in high school when Columbine happened, and we were scared that, you know, that something could happen in our school. So we can't wait a minute longer. I don't know where to start. This is a multifaceted issue. I hope the subcommittee can act quickly and swiftly. I'll get to work on this, so I'll be voting in favor of sending this to the subcommittee. Thank you.
You're going to make an amendment, Councilman Stikos? Well, let me speak on the bill before you make an amendment, as I know it has not spoken yet. You know, for me, this is about school safety, not gun control. Gun control will take a long time, is extremely tough to implement, and is done at the state and federal level. For me, as a father with two young children in the Cranston public schools, I wanted to take action and do something. And to be honest with you, I waited far too long. It's what happens when you're a new council president. After a few years in the council, you get to be a leader. Sometimes it takes a while to figure out what you need to do. I feel this is a step to work collaboratively, cross-party lines, as a group, to solve this problem. I want this group to come out with solutions, not rhetoric. Not politicians accusing other politicians of having rolling meetings in the middle of a meeting. Not asking, "Why didn't you hear my bill a year ago? Why are you doing it tonight? It's on tonight. Let's get anything hearing tonight." Might have taken too long to act, but we're acting. You know, I asked my son, "How would you feel if there were more police officers in your school?" And my nine-year-old looked at me and said, "Safe." I would feel safe then. I take offense to everyone who stood up tonight and talked about our police force making schools feel unsafe. That is just not true. Someone did bring up a point. In this resolution, we talk about lock boxes. The reason we talk about lock boxes is because it's currently legal to carry a concealed weapon into a school. Whether we pass Councilman Lanny's resolution or not, that will still be legal tomorrow. When I wrote this, I put in place a mechanism to ensure, if for some reason the state legislature does not act, we will have a mechanism to keep weapons out of schools. I know some of these measures will cost money. That's why I've created a commission led by our finance chairman, whose duty it is to root out these things and see what they're, what they cost. He may be a Republican, but he also happens to be the finance chairman. I then put one member of each party on. And as ex officio, I sit to break ties. Fortunately, that's the way the parliamentary procedure works. I could put every councilman on there, I could put tons of people. The goal is to try to have an actionable solution, and I think five members is the best way to get to an actionable solution. Councilman Lanny mentioned earlier that I asked Colonel Winquist in a budget meeting about concealed carry permits, and he is correct, because I had the concealed carry permit. And I asked him, "Mr. Winquist, Colonel Winquist, do you believe someone should carry a weapon in school?" And he said, "No." And I said to him, "Well, what would happen if I was to bring my weapon to school?" And he said, "Lock it in your car." And I looked at him and I said, "You do realize the legislation at the State House would make parking lots, school grounds, and you would make my non-criminal behavior criminal, punishable by five years in jail and a $20,000 fine? That is why I have yet to approve the concealed carry weapons permit ban, because there is no mechanism to put in place a law-abiding citizen to leave their weapon in their vehicle, go into school, and pick up their kid. I have a fundamental issue with that. I don't believe in making non-criminal behavior criminal. I'm sorry if I believe that, that you should create a law that fundamentally does not get someone in jail for leaving their weapon in their car to go pick up their kid. So that's where I feel on both resolutions. I'm going to, I'm going to vote to send this resolution to the study commission, and I will make a motion to adjut, to amend Councilman Lanny's bill to ensure that when this does go into general assembly, if it does pass, they take the considerations of parking lots and what school grounds is to heart, because you literally could put an innocent person in jail for no reason.
Council Stikos, do you have an amendment? Yes, I just, what I would suggest is that this be added to, as an addition to what Councilman Plaskus proposed. That the city council asks the school committee in cooperation with the Cranston Police Department to present current school safety measures and the school committee's recommendations for improvements the city can take at a joint meeting with the city council. Under discussion? You have a vote. Motion approved? Motion approved. You have a second? Under discussion? Councilman Vivek.
Thank you, Council President. My only concern, Councilman Stikos, with that is that that's exactly what the committee is doing. According to the school committee chairperson on the committee, we're going to have experts from the school department, the police department, the fire department, testify as experts, and give us their presentation, so, and so that we can expedite this. My goal was to get this done in March, because we have the budget season's gonna start early in, early April. The budget announcement comes out on the 28th, I believe, of March, somewhere right around the end of March. So April, we have to be, we'll be into the budget season. So I'd like to have this committee finish its job and report to the full council. Obviously, everyone could attend anyway, but I don't see why we have to have a joint meeting with the school committee. They're going to be part of this, this committee, and they're going to present in a very concise hour, two-hour format, whatever it takes, so that we can get this done. I don't want to drag it out. I think that your proposal is just going to make it take longer. I don't think it's going to expedite anything. And we certainly want to hear, we can hear from someone representing students, someone representing parents, but don't want to make it four-hour sessions every day, every time, because we'll never get to some recommendations by the end of the month. And if there's anything we can do for the budget season, I'd like to have it done by the first debate.
All right, can I just restart?
You may.
Maybe what we ought to do with Mr. Jerry still? If you could tell us, would you be able to tell us what kind of a timeline? Because this, as Councilman Vivek was saying, and what I'm also saying, is whatever that, the process is going to start, and really, most of the work is going to be done by the school department. When do you think you would be in a position to come to the common and present recommendations and what you're doing now?
So through the chair, to Chair Governor Jerry. Councilman Stikos would like to know if you'd be able to basically have the meeting he's referring to, or would you prefer to have the meeting in Councilman Vivek's subcommittee? I do think the meeting is a valid presentation of the school committee. I just don't, just, we're trying to get the idea of when the best time to have this.
I guess my concern is March, because today is February 26th. And we want this done in March. And I'm not sure what your meeting schedules are, I know what our meeting schedules are. And then I'm just, I'm concerned about the, the short timeframe that you're talking about to actually get things done.
If I may, Council President, well, obviously, we could have a little bit more time. We don't need to finish it at the beginning of the budget season, but, you know, my goal is to try to get it pretty far along, actually, to get, you know, when we get to the final budget vote. So we have plenty of time, so I think there's enough time. But I think, you know, we'd like to have your participation as a, as a member so that, you know, we have your input, and then you could help us with the experts that testified before us. But I think that would expedite it a little bit, rather than having one meeting. Because I think it's going to take more than just the school department, particularly the police department. We may need some outside risk analysis company.
To your point, that's, we've hired an architectural engineering group, that's what I was speaking about earlier tonight, the meeting, the first district leadership meeting that we had tonight, to look at all of our buildings. And one of the pieces is safety and security. So when you talk about the things that we want done, or the things that we're looking at, we're not looking at just the buildings that we have standing here today, because we don't know that those are going to be the buildings that we're going to have in five years. So changes that we're making, or changes that we want to make, might be a little bit more short-term. There's some things that we're working on currently that are going to take a while, just because of the cost involved, so we're trying to parse it out a little bit. Without, without being fresh, we don't want to give away everything that we're doing to provide safety and security in our schools. That we wish to, to talk down all of the measures that we need. I'm certain that I can get enough information together in a short amount of time to get a framework of what we're looking for. Because it's, it's a larger issue, and it's not just renovations and things like that. We're really looking to find some social workers, school psychologists, the, the social issues, the mental health issues, that's all that has to come into this conversation. So when you talk about bringing in experts, I think you need to start talking about bringing in mental health experts and all of these other pieces, not just the, the actual safety. I think that's part of the safety. And then, is there, is Councilman McCall, he spoke about the polling and all the things that we've done to, you know, trying to deal with that issue? You know, there's more work to be done, so.
If I may interject to my colleagues, since this is a resolution we're sending to the committee, I think we can just approve this amendment, add it as a number six, and figure out if the meeting needs to come before the full council or the, or the subcommittee, when we have the subcommittee. So I would assert passage of this resolution to continue the roll-in forward in spirit of partnership. Maybe, maybe they can't come before the full council in the next month or so, maybe that's germane. So Councilman Stikos, I'm all for it. Let's move this forward in spirit of partnership. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
On the amendment?
Yes.
On the amendment? Apologies, Councilman.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Councilman Haggis?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Floyd?
Yes.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman McCollum?
Yes.
Councilman Plaskus?
Yes.
Councilman Vivek?
Yes.
Yes. Any further amendments? Any further discussion on the resolution? We've all spoken once. We're good. On the, on the resolution, as amended. Oh, I have a motion, do I have a motion to approve the motion as amended?
The motion is?
So the motion is, I need a motion to re-approve the resolution as amended.
So move it.
I have a motion in second.
Wait, I thought the, I thought the motion was...
To send it to committee.
Does that want to vote?
No, we're sending it, we're sending it to the subcommittee. It's 10:15. We're all going to vote on it. We're sending it to the subcommittee. Clerk, ready? Consideration yes. As amended. Thank you, gentlemen, for keeping me honest. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes.
Councilman Haggis?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Floyd?
Yes.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman McCollum?
Yes.
Councilman Plaskus?
Yes.
Councilman Vivek?
Yes.
Councilman McCollum?
Yes. Moving on to the second. Resolution urging the generals under the task legislation banning guns in schools sponsored by Councilman Lanny.
Motion, motion.
Second.
I want a second. I have a motion to approve in a second. Under discussion? Councilman Lanny?
Thank you, Council President. Fine. I'm going to get a vote. You say something about persistence. Well, I'm a very persistent person, I guess. This resolution is banning guns in schools, concealed weapons in schools. Now, I know you want to amend it, and you want to say the school grounds. Well, that's fine. I can live with that. But you could have done this 10 months ago. And that's what bothers me. We wasted all this time, 10 months, when we could have been accomplishing everything we're talking about tonight. And that's what's frustrating, or being involved in political fights. And I look at this, it wasn't a fight, that's all it was. A little spat between colleagues. Well, I hope this is the last spat. I hope we can work together cooperatively as a council instead of as two different groups of people. I'll put my best foot forward, and I hope you put your best foot forward also. So let's try to work together in the future, and let bygones be bygones.
Councilman, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. So this had come in front of the ordinance committee or was presented to the council and sent to the ordinance committee. But the first time it was said, it was already held for the study, so it had gotten tabled. And I believe the position of the committee was, once it came back in front of the general assembly, we would discuss it again. So this is the first opportunity we had. I asked that they come right in front. Don't go to the ordinance committee, come right in front of us now, so we can debate it. That being said, a couple of years ago, Councilman Lanning and I both voted against this. I remember that, that clearly. Just like him, you know, I had to change the heart and change the position on this. I believe schools are a place for education, and nobody should be concerned about concealed carriers. We should leave the, um, security after the professionals to the police department and take other measures, of course. But I think the police should, um, be the ones that have to carry the guns and, and, you know, do that. I'm also concerned because maybe someday in the future, national concealed carry will happen. I don't know, but we pulled in the general assembly to allow it for somebody with a Utah permit or somebody with a New Mexico permit. But whatever restrictions or unknocked restrictions they have, will not be able to come onto our schools. So, um, I'll be voting for this, uh, resolution tonight. I hope we can all work collaboratively in the future. And, um, the school committee, with all of us here, regardless of party, and we do the people's business. Thank you.
Councilman Harper?
Thank you, Council President Farina. Uh, just for the record, um, there were occasions where I made a motion to approve this, uh, bill. Um, there were occasions where I made motions to take it off the table. But because of Democrats, the minority party, we didn't have another vote to, to hear the bill. So, politics played a role. Also, in all fairness to the chairman, the chairman of a committee cannot make a motion or a second. So, he, he's kinda restricted also. So because of the parliamentary procedures, the majority party kinda held this bill in a limo frame of. I had issues with it, but over time, I think the testimony and Mr. Warren, our conversations with that gentleman, let us through the editor and testimony convinced me this is the right thing to do. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman McColl?
Thank you, Council President. I applaud, uh, Councilman Poplaskis. I thought it was well said. I think we can certainly work together, uh, for the future. But I, I also am proud of John Lanning. And I'm happy this day is come and now it's time to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stikos?
Uh, I support this, uh, this resolution. I want to thank John Lanning for singing with it and, uh, pursuing this so that we are going to get a vote on it. The, uh, as to Councilman Fedeckio's, uh, statements on that it doesn't solve the, the problem, I, I agree with that. But we never, uh, said that it was gonna solve all the problem. Uh, it was a, an easy, uh, an easy step that could be taken. That was, we knew there was, uh, action at the State House to support this. And we were trying, uh, to move the process along. So we never presented it as the answer, but merely a piece. And I don't think there is an answer, one answer. This is, uh, if you said a difficult problem, it needs lots of, lots of steps to, to solve.
Councilman Fedeckio?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, my only, my only concern with it is that, um, I don't know how, you know, how it's, if it were to pass at the General Assembly. We have no way of knowing. So, um, we're gonna continue to do our work without knowing whether or not it's gonna pass. Because it's gonna, it could be up there through May, June. And we don't know when it will be resolved there. There are some logistical nightmares that I think it presents with three guys. I heard about people who have a concealed permit. They might live in a house that's been somebody feeded the school, uh, you know, or walked by the school. The city hall is right in between the school buildings. But, based on what I, what I said earlier, I, I don't think it's gonna have, it, it's impact is so little. And I don't think that the, the resolution, the resolution could have been changed any time during the last year as well to, uh, to improve a much greater safety issue and not just, uh, attack, uh, go after concealed carry permits, which, you know, now I know that they're on, on, in our schools. The question is, how many people from outside or out of the other, you know, 3,000, 3,000 people that might have a concealed permit are gonna come on to Cranston with an intent to, to hunt. But, um, this is something that the legislature, I think, now will hear because I've, I've seen quite a few bills get floor of activity. And there will be a bunch of, um, guns control bills that'll go up before the legislature in the next week. And so, you know, one of my jobs is to practice on that legislation. So, um, I've seen quite a bit go, uh, go in the last couple of days. This may look very well get hurt. And, you know, it's the general assembly's job to deal with it anyway. So whatever they decide, um, you really, you have no control over. So, um, I don't have a problem sending it up there. You know, whether or not, we're gonna, I think, the committee will continue to do its work based on the laws as we know them. And if, if something passes, fine. But I don't think it's gonna have, um, that tremendous an impact.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, President. I just want to, uh, reiterate the, while I was the athletic director, we determined at that time that any student athletes that traveled to a facility that was not part of the main campus was considered part of the campus. So if kids get in a car and drive to the ice rink, or if kids from Cranston West drive up to Hope Road, uh, I would like to make sure that this committee considers that those areas, uh, are part of the campus, which would include Doric Avenue. We, we send a, a girls' soccer team down there. Cranston Stadium, uh, which is a couple of blocks away, but it's still part of our campus. So the general rule that we used to use in athletics was, anything or any place where our student athletes go to is an extension of the campus. So hopefully, our, our subcommittee will keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Councilman Lanning?
Thank you. Is there response to Council, uh, Council's, uh, idea of campus? Is, is that a state law? Your best, or is that just a local thing that the school committee put together or the principals put together?
Oh, Councilman Lanning, and from what I remember, we had an incident where, uh,
No, no, I just wanna know what the school is. I don't wanna hear the story of the incidences or anything else.
Well, I think it's relevant. It's relevant to determine what led to the lawsuit, because it determined what the campus was or was not. So if a student athlete gets in a car and drives to Hope Road and gets in an accident, he's still on campus. But if he gets in a car and drives to Smithfield Ice Rink, he's no longer on campus.
Oh, so you're saying, well, that would require school bus control, so am I correct?
Under school, school bus supervision, they're fine. But if they get into a car, a personal car.
Mr. Jerry, Mr. Jerry, you still here? Could you answer this question for me?
So through the chair, okay? I, I, I will, um, just, just to reiterate what I believe, and this is from my reading last, Guns and Safety in Schools Act referenced as school grounds was any place where students congregate for an area of education, enrichment, or athletic activity. Excuse me. I'm giving the definition based on what you're saying. He asked a question, I'm answering it.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
It's back to you. You're afraid of your dogs.
This is not your name. Excuse me.
Maybe you could listen to me for a minute, because I'm banning your cat.
You have.
Point, point of information.
Yes, Council.
To Councilman Lanning. John? John? Yes? What Kenny was citing was case law in a suit. The judge rendering a decision. So your answer would be it's state law at this time. No, I just got, I just got, uh, state law, I'm in the General Assembly, H 7591, now quoted. For this purposes, in this section, school grounds means the property of a public or private elementary or secondary school or in the portions of any building, stadium, or other structure on school grounds. You're better at the time of the violation being used for an activity sponsored by or through a school in the state. So, Councilman Hopkins, you are correct. I. I knew you'd get one thing right. Thank you.
All right. Since I'm the last person to speak, I hope, Councilman Culler, I'll let you go now.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate it. So I want to thank Council Vice President, Councilman Fedeckio, for the research that you've done on this. Um, I guess one of the facts that's stuck with me is that 99.6% of other individuals in the state do not have concealed carry permits. And, and a couple of our councilmen tonight have already said this doesn't solve the problem. And again, as a, as a business person, working on a team, if it doesn't solve the problem, then, then let's get to the move fast. So, thank you very much.
Okay, so for me, um, I have a lot of issues with the current Safe Schools Bill that is before the General Assembly. I made some of them known in my prior statement. Uh, it's that definition of school grounds that basically says it's anywhere that you could be on school property. So, as a concealed carry permit holder, I think about those times when I'm coming into city hall and I'm parking my car in the parking lot. Maybe I'm coming to a council meeting. Maybe there's gonna be a hundred people here. Maybe I'm carrying my firearm, maybe I'm not. The state law that the Safe Schools Act is presenting would make that practice illegal and make me a criminal. And I'm in the city hall, not the school. Don't plan on going to the school. I'll tell you, that's probably one of the biggest reasons I haven't supported this bill. Every time I came before the committee, when I was a member, I did a second. I made those positions felt when we initially talked about it in February of last year. Democrats never changed the bill. Important fact, I'll, I'll admit my fault. I never asked them to change it. But I hear a lot of Democrats talk about politicizing an issue. We're all guilty. And we let this issue get politicized. And let it become more than it was. Because in reality, we can't change concealed carry permits in school. General Assembly might hear it, they might not. At this point, it's time to take a vote. I'm not gonna bother amending this, because I think there are too many loose places in which school grounds could be talked about. I e, you think about the Chaky complex. At times, that can be considered school grounds. So because it's school grounds once a week, does that make it school grounds all the time? So if someone who has a concealed carry permit or who was a victim of a violent crime goes to that place to exercise or, or run and happens to be concealing a weapon, because that is their right and they have the permit, that practice is now illegal. So again, the law has a lot of little flaws that, that, that nobody's talking about. They're talking about, oh, keep guns out of schools, and that's great. My hope is the General Assembly addresses these massive flaws, because that way they'll pass a bill. A bill that will keep guns out of schools. If they don't, a lot of people like you guys will keep going to the state house and testifying in those eight-hour marathon sessions, and nothing will change. I wish you the best of luck. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman May?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Floyd?
Yes.
Councilman McHale?
Yes.
Councilman Culver?
No.
Councilman Poplaskis?
Yes.
And Councilman Fedeckio?
Yes.
Councilman McCall?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on.